To the regular councilman for the city of Utica, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance, I'll ask Severia to lead us in the pledge, please.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Sikora.
Here.
Terrencey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Present.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here. All present, we have a quorum. Thank you, everyone. At this time in the council meeting, we open up the floor for public comments for any items listed on the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to any items that are on tonight's agenda? Please step up to the podium. She'll have her own. She's on the agenda. Mr. Cuttington, Mr. Galasko, anything tonight? All right, we have no public comments tonight. I would be looking for a motion to approve all items listed under consent business.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next item, under unfinished business, is rental inspection fees for multi-unit property owners. As everyone's aware, a few months ago, we updated our inspection fees for landlords that had multi-unit properties. During that vote, we eliminated at that time the discount for multi-units. Now we have some data at the property that was in question at Riverside Senior Housing. We actually timed the inspections. They took approximately three point two minutes. Our inspector was able to complete fifty inspections in three hours' time. At that current rate, he was making over a thousand dollars an hour. Obviously, that needs some adjustment. So in your packet, you will see a schedule that we're proposing. This is based on an average inspection for multi-units of twenty minutes. That still keeps our inspector making enough money, as well as the city to cover any administrative costs. So what I'm proposing, it's in the last row, is a hundred and fifty dollars for the first inspection, sixty dollars for subsequent inspections. Of that sixty dollars, the inspector will receive twenty dollars, and city will receive forty dollars, again, for admin fees. And you can see I did a theoretical estimate of what that would mean based on a fifty-unit inspection, which there really is, I think, the only property that has that number is Riverside. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve these fees as I outlined in the proposal.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Sikora, any discussion from council?
Nope.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
No.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We have no correspondence. Under new business, amendments to the City of Utica zoning ordinance. And I'll just read the summary. City of Utica is proposing amendments to two sections of the City of Utica zoning ordinance pertaining to recreational vehicles, parking, and storage. The sections being amended are included in Article, boy, what is that, fourteen, general provision, section fourteen twelve, open parking and storage in all districts except where permitted, and section fourteen thirteen, recreational vehicle storage. Proposed changes for section fourteen twelve include for even the parking of recreational vehicles on any public street, highway, alley, or public right-of-way in the city of Utica for any purpose or any length of time except for loading or unloading for no more than forty hours, forty-eight hours, excuse me. Definitions of recreational vehicle have also been added to the section. Proposed changes for section fourteen thirteen include more clearly defining the regulations regarding open recreational vehicle storage on residential property allowing for not more than one vehicle to be stored at any one time, restricting to the side or rear yard, and requiring that no public right-of-way is blocked. This all came about due to multiple complaints from residents about recreational vehicles being left on residential streets for prolonged periods of time, up to several weeks. We also literally just today received a complaint from a resident about recreational vehicle blocking a public sidewalk. So this really doesn't change the parking of the recreational vehicles on the resident's own property. It's more focused on not leaving these vehicles on the residential streets for longer than forty-eight hours. Planning Commission recommended approval of the amended ordinance. So that being said, we would recommend approving amendments to the City of Utica zoning ordinance, Article fourteen, general provision, section fourteen twelve, open parking and storage in all districts except where permitted, and section fourteen thirteen, open recreational vehicle storage.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Sikora. I would like to bring up something that the treasurer brought up to me. The language in section fourteen twelve E does seem a little bit confusing. No persons or persons homeowner, tenant, or non-homeowner shall park any recreational vehicle on any public street, highway, alley, or other right-of-way in the city of Utica for any purposes or any length of time except for loading and unloading for not more than forty-eight hours. And actually, this is not confusing, so I think what the treasurer showed me was an old copy. And let me check the other one. Nope, I think this copy's fine. Is there any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, does anybody, do you maybe planning, I'm not sure, where can you store recreational vehicles? Because I read it said, oh, C two, but even then, it had to be, essentially, you had to be selling them to even have them on your, I mean, do we have a place for?
They're permitted in residential and rear and side yards currently. So in your home, you can keep it in your driveway, being it's at your side yard, or technically in your rear yard. And it just must adhere to the ordinance section about accessory structure. So that would require it being set back three feet from an adjacent property line and all those different standards. With regards to commercial, we don't really have like a section where you allow for like open parking necessarily. It'd probably be something more industrial and would have to be handled with screening. One thing I will add, not to complicate anything further, a couple of the planning commissioners expressed some concern about limiting it to one in the event that someone had
That's right.
a, say, a jet ski trailer and a camper. In my opinion, it may open up, you know, more issues because that is multiple things being stored on sometimes smaller lots. But I just did want to bring that to your attention, that some of them felt that it may be more prudent to allow for two types of recreational vehicles, say, a trailer or a motorhome or something of that nature, so.
And at the planning meeting, it was also brought up if recreational vehicle parked in your garage counted, and that does not.
It does not. This is strictly open storage, which is why we wanted to add open recreational vehicle storage to the title, so you can have a boat or a trailer in your garage and then also have a, you know, a motorhome or something in your driveway that is permitted. It's just simply open storage, so.
But it does specify just one?
Yes, currently. And that's what the ordinance always stated. We did not change that at all. So we certainly could at this meeting, but that's entirely up to you.
Could folks come to council if we limited it to one and then seek permission for a second one?
Yes, but we need to set standards as to why, I would say. Otherwise, it could become discriminatory as why you would allow one and not another. So a certain lot size perhaps, or something like that.
That would seem reasonable, because you get, you know, a big old camper and then set a jet ski, it's like, is this a residence or a storage yard?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The forty-eight hour period excluded it to me. I'm not real clear on that.
Well, that wasn't in the ordinance at all, and that's just after doing some research. Dominic, the planning commission chair, and myself looked at other ordinances in similar communities, and it ranged anywhere from twenty-four to seventy-two hours, but we felt like forty-eight was a happy medium if you come home from your camp. You know, camping trip, you have forty-eight hours, say you have a very small driveway, you have forty-eight hours to get all your stuff out, clean it up, and then move it to where you have a permanent storage if you keep it somewhere else. But again, you know, planning commission kind of went back and forth on the timing. Some cities allow seventy-two. We thought that was a little excessive, twenty-four. It really comes down to, you know, compliance too, and having, you know, someone come out and then ticket them if it's there too long. So we thought forty-eight was seemed fair, but that's really up to you as well, so.
Any further discussion from council?
Yeah, I have a question. In section fourteen thirteen, number three, it says a travel trailer, motorhome, or camper parked or stored on a residential lot shall not be connected to sanitary facilities and shall not be occupied. Be occupied, does that include like the weekend visitor?
Technically, yes. And again, this is, this language was always in the ordinance. We didn't edit it, but it can be. That was another concern that they did bring up was whether or not we want to restrict that. If we want to restrict whether or not someone is like technically staying in it, putting in that limit on the time perhaps, or if you just want to allow it always for someone to technically live in that vehicle.
Interesting questions.
Out of personal experience, when I lived in Sterling Heights, my next door neighbor brought their family in for about five months of the year with this giant motorhome, and I would not want to see that.
No, it's across the house for me as well.
Your, what was that movie called?
Christmas.
Christmas.
Oh, yeah. Timely. Yeah, I think that does open up, you know, it truly becomes almost an accessory structure at that point, you know, in the secondary, secondary home, so.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is the amendment to exotic animal ordinance. This is something that I think was just missed several years ago when the reptarium opened. They house quite a few of the animals listed in our current ordinance. They house them in their facilities. Obviously, they're great advocates for animals. They take very great care of animals and do everything the right way. So the change in this language is meant to exempt them in any facility similar to theirs from the list of animals that are listed in our ordinance as prohibited in the city of Utica. The city's current, and I'll read from the summary, the city's current exotic animal ordinance prohibits possession of certain animals maintained by a local business. This amendment would exclude application of said ordinance to zoos, reptariums, aquariums, and veterinary facilities so long as animals are maintained in a safe and humane manner in commercially zoned areas. So I would be looking for a motion to adopt this ordinance change.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Sikora, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is window damage at seven six six zero Auburn Road, Vinnie's Italian Eatery. I believe we have the petitioner here tonight. Could you step up to the podium and give us your name and address, please?
Hello, everyone. My name is Severia Givenazzo. I and my husband own Vinnie's Italian Eatery down the street at seven six six zero Auburn Road and the storefront of seven six six four also. And there is a broken window situation that incurred damage a while, and the onset of the cement replacement that occurred in the end, or July, August time of two thousand and twenty-two. Started off as a small stress crack, so received a code violation because it expanded to the peripheries of the window, and it's could be a danger, it has a hazard. So in reaching out to the city, I'm hoping that there could be some sort of compensation to replace the window that got damaged from the city construction.
So in your packet, you'll see the correspondence from Severia, the business owner, as well as the report from MML. And I believe the city clerk left on your desk because we just received it late after the packet went out. And you received that letter as well?
I received it this morning as well.
About their determination of the situation?
They, what the determination was, that because the city of Utica is a government office, that it cannot be held liable or sued due to governmental immunity. So that leaves me with a broken window of almost twelve hundred dollars to replace due to the cement work that was done. So at this point, having received that email this morning, he, Mr. Barrett, he also said that a possibility would be to pursue the construction crew if it were to have been contracted, but I found out from Lori that no, it was the city's DPW crew that did the work. So that still leaves me to a dead end. So just was wondering, as far as our insurance, our deductible is a thousand dollars, the window's a thousand one hundred ninety, so it wouldn't even be an insurance issue at this point to even raise my premium. So I was just wondering if there could be any kind of compensation on the city's part for the damages that were incurred.
Well, before we deliberate, I would say let's get a motion on the table to either grant or deny this request, and then we can deliberate.
I'm going to make a motion to deny the request.
By Sikora.
I'll support that.
Support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council or questions from the petitioner?
Being in the glass business, this occurred over a year ago. Did you know the day when the cement was done, did you see a crack, did you hear something, did you? And if you did, why did, why is it now coming to us a year later?
I have a letter that I presented and submitted to the city clerk about the why, but it was found out last year. It was noticed in the central part of the window, and I have photographs to show where it started. It happened as we were preparing for the gasoline alley, getting the window, you know, cleaned up, and like, oh, what is that kind of thing? And just like realizing from people talking, it's like, well, that's caused by vibration. And then looking out the window, it's like, oh, the cement just got jackhammered in replacement. And it was noted, because many estimates are from last year, as to what occurred of when it occurred. And it expanded. It was like only about an inch or two in the middle, and it's like, whoo. And it was a glass specialist who actually told me that the jackhammering is most likely what caused it.
I'm going to disagree.
That would be between he and you.
Or not. I've been in business for forty-four years in the glass business. Could it have been vibration? I really doubt it because you have just as much vibration going up and down the streets with the big trucks and plows and everything. And I'm not trying to penalize you, okay? But it could have been a bar crowd, it could have been all kinds of things that you just never saw before, and it happened. I'm just really concerned that all of a sudden it's, when did you first tell the city that you thought we broke your window?
It was like last September. And as far as other traffic or in my things that I submitted to the city, I also showed the why. We have four exact storefront-sized windows in the same correlation. We have six altogether, but four in the same correlation as the one that got broken. And the only one that's broken is the one that got the jackhammering that doesn't have support walls on either side. The one adjacent to it has a support of brick wall next to it. This is the only freestanding one in an old frame that has hardly any rubber seal. It's a really, yeah. If you see the pictures that I submitted, it shows all the differences.
We did do cement work all up and down Auburn Road that summer. This is the only, the only business that.
Lori, did you submit that information?
It's all in the packet. It's on the internet as well.
Yeah, I have all the explanations. I submitted the extra photographs. I went up and down the street taking pictures of the differences of why they didn't get affected and why we would have.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from council?
Most, no, most of the other.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
No.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. The request has been denied. Thank you, though.
May I leave this way?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome to stay, though. It's exciting stuff tonight.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Severia, your purse. Next on the agenda is our Toys for Tots campaign. I think Councilman Ryan would like to present that for us.
All right, so yeah, so this is going to be our fourth year doing the Toys for Tots campaign through the Utica Fire Department and the Utica Firefighters Foundation. Last year was our most successful year yet. Trying to remember, I know you just sent out the, what was the numbers from last year?
I should remember this because I just can't look it up.
You just sent it out. I'm pulling it up right now as far as the exact numbers. Last year, we collected over twenty-five hundred toys worth over thirty-five thousand dollars. We're hoping that can be just as successful this year. We have our drop boxes set up in City Hall and the library again. So we're encouraging our community members and business members to donate to come and drop off either unwrapped brand-new toys into our drop boxes or contact the Firefighters Foundation for gifts and kind or anything along that that we transact into the Toys for Tots and the Marine Corps program. The drive is ending on the same day as our Utica Christmas tree lighting, on December ninth, and we'll be doing our collections until then.
Excellent. Yeah, last year was incredible. I know I just made a trip over to USA Tire this afternoon. They had a big box of toys, so you got a good starter batch going in there now.
Good.
So absolutely, we encourage all residents, business owners in the city of Utica, help support this. There is, and I don't know if you said it, there's a drop box here in City Hall and also a drop box at the library. And we also think the other businesses, I know there's several in the city that are doing their own campaigns, so if you can't come to the City Hall or Utica Public Library, go to one of the local Utica businesses and you'll find a lot of toy boxes.
And I did say, yeah, there's a couple of our downtown businesses, our bars and restaurants that are participating in the battle of the bars, again, a little competition between themselves, so they can also donate at those businesses downtown that are participating as well.
Excellent. Well, thanks to you and our Utica Fire Department for doing this. It's a great thing, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions for Councilman Ryan about that? There's no motion required. Excellent. We'll move forward with department reports. I'll kick it off. First thing I'd like to mention is we had our Purple Heart Trail dedication on Saturday, which conveniently was also Veterans Day, was held at the American Legion Post three fifty-one. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Terrencey, Mayor Pro Tem Sikora for attending, and Councilman Robinson, and Councilman Deanne as well, who are also veterans. So you got to wear two hats that day, both of you, didn't you?
Pretty cool.
Yeah, it was very cool. We also had some representatives from our local government, including State Rep Nate Shannon and County Commissioner Sylvia Groot. The American Legion folks there, John Maronic, who's the commander and also a Utica resident, was there and gave a very nice speech. It was a great day. We had a very nice turnout. I think we had five Purple Heart recipients or members of their family because they were deceased, unfortunately. And I think it was a very meaningful event for all the folks that were in attendance. In case anyone doesn't know, the Purple Heart Trail in Utica starts at Memorial Park. There's a large sign. There are a couple signs along Auburn and Cass Avenue, and then another very large sign at the American Legion Post three fifty-one, and that indicates what the trail is. I'd also like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Sikora and his company, Saint Clair Glass, for donating the signs themselves. So again, it was a great event. I need to give a special call out to our Utica DPW this month. They have had a pretty horrendous go of it. We had three water main breaks, is that right, three? They completed hydrant flushing. They've also been scurrying to finish the Christmas decorations on the poles because our light company is very anxious to get the lights throughout the city on the light poles. And I'm sure there's many things I'm missing here. I know they've been very, very busy, and we appreciate all the hard work. And finally, I'd like to announce that our downtown Utica Christmas tree lighting is scheduled to happen once again on Saturday, December ninth. If you haven't been to this, it's a great event. We usually have a few thousand people downtown. This year's highlights, Rup Raj from Fox Two News will be our master ceremonies. Our very special guest will be Brian Barcheck from the Reptarium and Legacy Aquarium. As you all know, the old St. Vincent de Paul building on Van Dyke, on the east side of Van Dyke, right across from the existing reptarium, is under construction, and they plan to open in January or later. So that's very timely that we're going to have Brian here to be our special guest, so we're very excited about that. Also, the Utica High School marching band will be in attendance, and a large-scale fireworks show kind of ends the event. And of course, we have a visit from Santa and Mrs. Claus. So it's a great event. It's free. It's Saturday, December ninth. Everything starts at seven PM at Memorial Park. And that's all I have. Are there any other reports from council?
I just have a question, and this would be for the chief, about people that park their entire vehicles all the time on a city street. Is that allowed, not allowed? I know if we have a snow emergency, they can be ticketed, towed, whatever, but when it's every day of the year, multiple cars always on the street, and they take up the entire lane.
So as far as parking on the street, if the vehicle is properly plated, insured, you know, tires are inflated, it's not creating something, it's a legally parked vehicle, and we can enforce it. You know, if it's something where it's in need of repair, it's leaking stuff, you know, then we can take enforcement. Or from a snow emergency standpoint, we can obviously take enforcement. But it's a legally plated vehicle and it's there, we really have nothing from the police department to enforce.
Thank you.
Any other reports from council? All right, anything from planning? Master plan update?
Yeah, we're still working on the master plan. We had a work session last week on it and made some final decisions. And so we're working on it over the holiday, and in January, we'll have a final draft to Planning Commission, and then it will come to your, this body, to be released for a sixty-day public review and comment. So at this point, we aren't making any major changes to the plan. Planning Commission felt comfortable with the plan that we created five years ago and the direction that that is going. Few minor tweaks here and there. What I did say to Planning Commission is we do want to just vamp it up a little bit, add some new photos, things like that. So if you have any photos in your library or anything that you want included in the plan, please feel free to email me directly or send them to Lori, and she can send them my way as well. But yeah, other than that, no major updates, I don't believe. Might be looking at pursuing a small trail grant down the road. Hopefully get a meeting on the books about that soon, but other than that, nothing big, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Thanks for all the hard work on the master plan, too. I know it's been a long, long road. I know it's been a long, long road.
Yes, and the other item, I believe the middle of this month, we are going to be looking to submit an application to the MSU Planning School. They look for basically projects every semester for their students, and one of the ideas that we had was to sort of present them with downtown Utica and have them maybe look at different ways you can utilize some of your vacant land, how you can look to revitalize the downtown a little bit, different scenarios like that. So that's kind of going along with some of the discussions we had with the master plan and potentially being a subset of that plan. No guarantees, but we thought we'd submit a proposal and see if any of the students would pick it up to kind of do as their end-of-year project, but just something fun that could be, get some new ideas flowing and creative things that could happen in the city, so.
I love it. Thank you very much. No reports from assessing or building tonight. Library, Ms. Francis is excused, but I believe Mayor Pro Tem Sakura has a report.
Yes, Ms. Francis asked me to just mention that the same night as the city's Christmas tree lighting, the library is going to have their bake sale from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and then there will also be a children's Christmas storytime starting at 6:00 PM. So it just adds to a very nice evening, and the bake sale helps raise funds for the library, so that's it.
And Santa Claus is returning to the library basement this year.
Okay.
Last year, we had Santa in here.
Right. He's in the lobby.
That's right, the queue, the line was in here because the library was under construction, so that construction's complete, and Santa will be back in his home in the giving room below the library.
I thought he was from the North Pole.
He is, he's just visiting us. Don't you know that?
You said home.
His home queue.
Fire Chief Willsec is excused for family purposes tonight. He said he really didn't have anything to report. Chief Kaluzny, report from police.
Good evening, mayor and council. In your packet, I'll start with the first agenda item summary, and that's for Police Academy sponsorship. State of Michigan and through MCOS, which is the, our law, our authorized agent through the state, the licensed police officers, set aside $30 million to assist municipalities with training and sending officers to the Police Academy. This program is about a year in its, in its, in its use, and they've almost gone through about half the funds already. Currently, we have one officer that's at the academy that we took advantage of this grant, and what this grant does is it pays $24,000 to the municipality, and that covers academy costs, uniforms, and wages, benefits, wages, and stuff like that. So it's an excellent opportunity for a city of our size to be able to train and send somebody to the academy for a very, very small investment on the city side. What I'm looking at, at this next academy, is to sponsor two officers to the Police Academy. So I'd be looking to accept the grant through the state, and it's a first-come, first-served grant. There isn't any, any process as if you're going to get it or not. You submit the paperwork, the money's in there, they're going to reimburse the municipality. Two of the officers I'm looking at, one is currently one of our newest dispatchers, Reese Stewart, and the other one is actually a city of Utica resident, Cameron Small, that I'm looking to sponsor to the Police Academy. So what I'd be looking for is a motion to apply and accept the MCOS grant and sponsor two cadets to the upcoming Police Academy for the winter 2024 session.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Deanne. Any discussion from council?
Just a question, what happens if there is the unfortunate event that they do not pass the academy? What happens in that process? Just curious.
So what happens, and I know this because there's another municipality that had a person have to drop off, the state will kind of prorate the funds. So depending on how far the cadet goes through the academy, if you've expelled the funds between the uniforms, the wages, benefits like that, then they will go ahead and say, okay, up here doesn't have to be reimbursed, but if it goes past, you know, whatever has to be reimbursed to the state.
Okay, so we're still not out anything?
Correct, yes. If they don't pass, but they make it the whole time, we've, we can show that we've used the full amount, we don't have to pay that money back to the state.
Good question. Thank you, council. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, most curious. Your next item, chief.
Mayor and council, there is two more motions that I do need to just go ahead and modify my budget, just to accept the funds. The first one would be requesting a budget amendment to increase the revenue miscellaneous police department grant, GL 101, 301, 569, triple zero with the suffix MCOS, by $48,000.
So moved with all that.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Deanne. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion curious.
And the next one is to request a budget amendment to increase the following GL accounts by Meeting and Training GL 101, 301, 957, triple zeros, suffix MCOS, by $11,500. Uniforms and Trainings GL 101, 301, 723, 040, with the suffix MCOS, by 4,000, and Medical Exams GL 101, 301, 836, triple zero, MCOS, by 2,000.
So moved with all of the above.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Deanne. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion curious.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. The next agenda item summary I have is for the graphics for our new Chevy Tahos. Currently, we have one vehicle at Synergy, and they have started taking the vehicles apart, so what we need is to go ahead and apply the decals. I went ahead and solicited three different quotes. Magic Graphics came back with the best quote between the three. They're also, Synergy are upfitter, they're also a preferred vendor for them, and they will do onsite installation. So the one vehicle that's there, Magic's going to send a team there and do the graphics there, and they're also going to set up, and then we're going to drop the other four vehicles off there. The funds for this was included in my budget. It was something that I had anticipated that we need for the vehicles. So I'd be looking for a request approval to utilize Magic Graphics to decal the new patrol vehicles for an amount not to exceed $2,600 from GL 101, 301, 983, triple zeros, and that's our police vehicle equipment.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
Is, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, is that 2,600 per vehicle?
No, that's the total cost for all five vehicles.
That seems like a really great deal.
That's what, I was surprised when the, I budgeted, I had anticipated a lot more between, for the vehicles.
That was my question, so. Okay.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion curious.
They're not going to have like a across-the-back window done by Magic Graphics? Raise their own billboard or something?
We did discuss, you know, maybe sponsorships from other companies. All right, thank you, mayor and council. That's all we have.
Thank you, chief. Our DPW report, Mr. Diamond.
Good evening, mayor and council. I apologize for running a little bit late today. I do have in your packet the agenda item for the sewer rehabilitation project, which started, obviously, before I was made, was hired, and now it's coming to fruition, which includes the cleaning, televising, televising, and the cured-and-placed pipelining of sewers throughout the city. Through a, HRC did a sewer televising to figure out which of our sewers would be first needed. They rated those one through four, one through five, and the worst ones are what we're starting with, so bids did go out. We did get six, six bids, three of them that were off the wall, and three of them that came back pretty, pretty nice, and we end up, I am, excuse me, recommending to go with the DVM Utilities, which is the low bidder. I also put in for a 20% contingency on this. Normally, we do 10%, but due to the fact that we do have a few of point repairs that need to be done to a couple of these sewers, this may help that out where we won't have to go out and rebid. We did have one that I was expecting our crew to do, but the first one we got there, we don't have the equipment that would be able to handle this. So these might come, when they come up to these, we'll at least have the money in there. We won't have to worry about it. And if they don't need to do them, we can actually add a few more on to, to knock a few more out. Obviously, this is coming through state grants and ARPA and also through our main repairs and through the sewer. So the motion on, for you, is to approve the 2023 sewer rehabilitation bid for the amount of 6,000, $696,972.75, plus 20% contingency costs to DVM Utilities, Inc., through grant revenue 592-000-569-000, 372-188, with operating transfer from grant fund 592-000-699-000, 21 ARPA, and expenditure main and main repair sewer 592-536-200-372188, 118. So moved.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Sakura. Sakura, discussion from council, I heard somebody.
When are we looking at, starting?
I'm glad you didn't get that opportunity.
Very technical. They can do this through, through the winter, so once we get this going, they'll start up, they'll, they'll probably come out and do a few as we go, you know, and obviously we'll have to let residents know where we're going to be and what they're doing, so.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion curious.
Thank you.
Anything more to report, sir?
I've got a few things, as the mayor commented, we did have a few water main breaks. We had a water main break at the Tuscan Plaza off Keating that was handled quickly, and then we had multiple breaks on Hawn Street, right in front of AT&amp;T. Our crews handled all that. We didn't have to contract out. They did a wonderful job. We never lost positive pressure, so we didn't have to alert the community about flushing water or anything. We didn't, I don't believe we got any phone calls. We might have had a few low-pressure points at some point, but luckily, we were able to do it with positive pressure and everything went well. We had everything we needed. Like mayor said, hydrant checks are completed for the year. Ken Bonkowski and Michael Francis knocked those out in the last three weeks, which has been great. Good timing because Mike goes on vacation tomorrow, so he's, we had Summer's Lot paved and striped. I'm sure if you saw that, that went very well. DPW did do the demolition of it, and then we had the company come in, Total Asphalt came and did it, so we helped them out with some, with removing, so it cut some of our costs down a little bit on that. They are going to be doing the DPW yards in the spring. That was the, I think, last month's council meeting that we had that approved. All the comfort stations are now closed and winterized. The sprinklers are now winterized. Rees are all hung. They did start wrapping the posts, and I had to have them stop, so that's why you can see they started in front of Jimmy John's, the outside company contractor, but we need to get those rees up, so we did knock those out this week, finished up today. Two months ago, Mrs. Zeremba came to council meeting asking for, to purchase a swing for Grant Park for her husband and son. That was installed today. Cement is curing. We should have the plaque on it either Friday or Monday, so I'm going to, I've been keeping in contact with Mrs. Zeremba the whole time, and she's already paid, I think she came in paid in the invoice yesterday for the swing delivery and for the plaque. Working on our MS4 permits, which are in process. The garage openers were installed that were approved last council meeting. Thank you very much. Those have been a blessing, and when, soon as the winter gets here, they're really going to be, it's really going to help out. The trucks are getting prepped for winter, all the plows, everything. Christmas decorations in Memorial Park have started. I did reset the time on the clock. It should catch up around 2:18 this morning because it stops, and then it'll start up. So that's all getting ready, going. Leaves in the park were starting to mulch down because the, our contractor has done for the year. Street sweeping we're working on, and I did obtain a Christmas tree for our Christmas tree lighting. It was a, going to be donated this year from a resident in Shelby Township. They were looking to get rid of one of their evergreen trees, and it was a friend of Brian Furley, one of our employees, and we went and took a look at it, so beautiful tree. We just have to remove it, which we were going to have to do anyways to pay for one, so it's going to be nice, so.
And their name is on the donor banner. I already took care of that.
All right.
It hasn't gone to the printer yet, but it's on the file.
Good. I think that's it. Do you have any questions for me?
I will reach out, or you can if you want, because you've been talking to Mrs. Zeremba. I don't know if they want to have a dedication ceremony or something to that effect.
She stated just when the plaque goes in that she was just going to have her family. It's a small family. She wasn't going to ask much because, you know, they were just going to go do what they wanted to do, and that was it.
If they'd like anyone from the city to, myself or any other member from council, we could definitely support that as well.
I will certainly let her know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. At this time, I believe our treasurer, Mr. Paternoster, will present the next item.
Mayor and council, you have in your packet an agenda item entitled Governmental Fund Balance Reserve Policy. The sound financial management policies and practices are of vital importance for maintaining and strengthening the long-term financial future of the city. A governmental fund balance policy is essential to plan for contingencies, maintain good credit standing, avoid unnecessary interest expense, generate investment income, ensure cash flow availability, and create a transparent and shared understanding of fund balance reserves. The proposed governmental fund balance policy establishes desired funding levels under normal operating conditions, the specific conditions under which the reserves may be used, and how the reserves may be funded. The policy will serve as a benchmark against which current and future decisions related to the use of governmental fund balance reserves can be made. For the purposes of this policy, the fund balance reserve of the general fund refers to the unassigned fund balance. That last statement is in there because in all of the other governmental funds, which are established by statute, the fund balances are restricted in nature by the statute that underlies the fund creation. So we don't use unassigned fund balance in the other governmental funds, only in the general fund. Within the general fund, we have several classifications of fund balance. We have restricted fund balance, which is identified either by state statute, federal law, or a bond covenant, or a covenant with whoever it was that provided the money to us. We have committed fund balances, which are balances that the city council has taken action, such as by ordinance or by resolution. Then we have assigned fund balances, which may have been created by a decision of council or by direction of the administration, primarily the mayor. And then we have the unassigned fund balance, which is everything else. Typically, the accounting, governmental accounting industry will say that the government should maintain 15% to 20% of their budgeted spending, operating expenditures in their fund balance just for cash flow purposes. And you often hear the term rainy day fund. Well, that refers to fund balance that you're holding in reserve, so to speak, in case of a refers to fund balance that you're holding in reserve, so to speak, in case of a catastrophe or a sudden downturn in the economy that results in your revenues not materializing as you had anticipated. There are some entities that will put that rainy day fund in a separate fund. Other entities adopt a fund balance policy that keeps extra money over and above that 15 to 20 in the unassigned fund balance for those occasions. I am recommending to this council, this policy, that we establish a minimum general fund, unassigned fund balance of 40%. That's the 15 to 20 that we keep for cash flow, and then an additional amount for unforeseen events. And in the circumstance, if the circumstance should arise that we need to draw that down because revenues didn't materialize, or we had a catastrophe, we will then have a mechanism where we start in subsequent years, building our fund balance backup. In this policy, I also identify a mechanism whereby if the unassigned fund balance should exceed that 40% as determined by our audited financial statements, then we will transfer the excess into a capital improvement fund. That fund may be a separate fund, or it may be a committed fund balance within the general fund. Again, I would recommend that we do a committed fund balance as opposed to a separate fund, only because it's easier to account for within the general fund if you, if you commit it. Once you put it into a separate fund, you can't really bring it back into the general fund without legal action of the decision of the board. Either way, whether it's in committed or in another fund, the board is gonna have to take action before that money can be tapped. And that's the purpose of this policy. You will see that it addresses other funds at different percentages. That's because of the varied, varied nature of those different funds. That will be the end of my discussion. I would recommend that the council adopt this fund balance reserve policy.
Mr. Mayor, I may make a motion to adopt this fund balance reserve policy.
Motion by Robinson?
Support.
Support by Terencey. Floor is open for discussion. I'd like to be the first to say, thank you, Phil. I know I've been driving you very hard to get this done. I know it's been a very high priority for both of us to get this done. This is a culmination of a lot of good work by council, a lot of fiscal responsibility, of watching how we spend, how we allocate our revenue, and because of that hard work, we're now in a position where we need to figure out where to put the surplus, right? Because it's not really surplus. The needs of the city far outweigh the cash that we see. But it's definitely a very, very large step forward. I've spoken about this approach to many of my colleagues, including other mayors and supervisors, council members, trustees, trustees from our neighboring municipalities, and all of them were envious that we're in a position that we're actually considering instituting this. So it's a great thing, and I think, I just wanna thank all of you for all the hard work we've done to get to this point where we can finally implement this. Any other discussion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, I wanna piggyback on what you said about the work Phil done, but I don't think, I think you're being a little humble. I think, I wanna thank you for spearheading this, and I'm very glad this is a, hopefully.
I'm just a traffic cop. I just, Phil did all the heavy lift and much appreciate everything he did to get this to where we're at now.
I would like to thank Phil as well. We've been talking about this for a long, a long time, and you and I just had the discussion, you know, before meetings. So I appreciate everything that you've done to get this together for us. Thank you.
You're welcome. I have to give credit to a colleague at another municipality who offered up his own policy and said, you have permission to plagiarize. It wasn't I that wrote, I tweaked it.
Then it's no longer plagiarizing if you have permission.
I tweaked it, I tweaked it for our specific circumstances. And actually, I had this close to being ready back in August, but I was not here for either the September or October meeting. The mayor asked me to hold off until I would be present to answer any questions, so. But yeah, I'm glad it's, it's finally, we're finally getting to this point. The next step will be to address the nature of the capital improvement fund itself, and then looking at our financial audit that will be wrapped up shortly, and come to council with a recommendation to move money. Okay?
Thank you.
I've been here long enough to see the really lean years and very lean years. So this is a testament to this council, to this mayor, to all the department heads, to the people in our departments for really trying and caring. So when we come through budgets and we say, you have to be tight, you have to be lean, we can't waste, everybody is in that policy, everybody believes in that policy, and this is everything from security for the city of Uta to move forward and make repairs and do what we need to do. It's job security for our employees at the same time, because we're gonna be here, okay? So it's a long time coming, and I just wanna say thank you to everybody, because as the mayor said, there's a lot of other communities that are nowhere near the shape we are, and that's really come to fruition in the last, I don't know, five, six, seven years.
Seven, eight, nine, ten.
Where we've all made that effort and got to this point, so thanks, everybody. Great work, Gus.
Thank you, Ken.
Great work, Phil.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no further discussion from council, we'd be looking for a motion to adopt the
We have a
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Thanks again, Phil. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else to report tonight?
Just to the residents and property owners, tax bills went up to the printer. They should be going out in the mail on November 30th. Fortunately for everybody, this winter tax bill is much, much smaller than the summer tax bill, but just, you know, anticipate those around the first week of December.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, report from administration.
Mayor and Council, I don't have anything for you tonight.
Thank you. We have nothing to report from Parks and Rec or the Historic District Commission. Ms. McGrill, anything from our illustrious city attorney?
No news is good news.
I will take that as move on, right? At this point in the meeting, we open up the floor for communication from the public. This would be for any items not listed on the agenda, and everyone is welcome to address council for three minutes. Is there anyone tonight that would like to speak to council? Step to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Jared Sherline, 45519 Venker Avenue. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm here tonight to discuss with you, or share with you, my, the concerns myself and other neighbors of mine on Venker have around pedestrian safety on our street, primarily around school hours. As many, as you all are probably aware, Venker is where the main entrance to Flickinger Elementary is, and which currently, based on what this, the school has posted online, about 500 students, with over 50% of them that walk to school, which includes my son. And based on the track information provided by the police chief, we could see that Venker is unique in the, that particular area of town in that while it has the same road structure, infrastructure, a narrow, undivided two-lane road with no sidewalks, it experiences over twice the volume, the traffic volume a day as other streets such as Platt and even Klingclammer, or if that's how you pronounce it, excuse me, which is also happens to be the secondary entrance point to Flickinger. Additionally, Venker does have various open drainage ditches, which will cause many of us, including myself and other neighbors who are to walk in their kids to school, to be forced to either walk in neighbors' yards or into traffic to progress towards the school. Speaking with the chief and as well as the mayor, we've, we've had, that has led to a temporary expansion of the no parking zone at the intersection of Venker and McLean, which was, is greatly appreciated. But also, at the chief's recommendation, I come here tonight to also make you aware of our desire to support the installation of sidewalks along Venker, and ask that the city could consider taking, starting the process required to make that happen, including the creation of a, the committee required to request a safe routes to school grant, which could provide up to $300,000 for infrastructure improvements such as sidewalks and any other infrastructure needs that that committee finds is relevant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, this is a little unique, because I know we've had an ongoing discussion with this family. I know I sat in your driveway. I think I scared you both, because I got the hour that they started at Flickinger wrong. I think they had made it later or something. I, or maybe I just got confused, which is known to happen sometimes. And I know you came out, you're like, who are you? So we're, we are aware of the, the traffic issues, and I know chief's done a lot of follow-up work. Would you just like to speak briefly, chief, about where we're at on that, and maybe some of the work you've done to?
So the, you know, as, as he has addressed, the concern is really the, the safety of people walking to school. And there's actually a couple, couple things going on there. There's, there's the, you know, as, as children are walking, or as families are walking, not having a sidewalk does, does create a, a safety concern, because there isn't any place to, to have families safely traverse and go to school. We have an issue with, with speeding and with vehicles traversing that area, and then we also have a parking issue that's, that's created, and more so in the afternoon. So, excuse me, from, from the police department's standpoint, from looking at it, we kinda tried to do a multi-pronged approach, you know, let's, let's look at the traffic, let's, let's compare that using our, our mobile speed sign, and then let's also look at the parking. So one of the things that we did, if you go on and look at the areas, we put temporary no parking signs. We had received a video that, I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your last name?
Sherline.
Sherline, I'm sorry. Mr. Sherline had, had sent to us, really addressing the concerns. So because of the way that the signs at, on Venker are designed right in front of Flickinger there, there's kinda some open spots that parents would pull up, park, and walk their families. What it was doing was creating a, a big hazard for school buses not able to leave. So when you have families coming in, you have traffic going, you have vehicles parking there, it's really a lot of congestion over there. So we put the temporary signs. I received actually, actually two from Mr. Sherline and another resident who were very happy to see something out there. So my hopes is, is based on, on kinda the residence data, my officers' own observations, that next council meeting, we look at permanently at least signing the area, addressing the parking. Still doesn't address the, the safety walking in, and that's where in discussions with Mr. Sherline, the grant that's, that's out there to possibly get, to, to look at creating that infrastructure, at least for, for the safe sidewalks and stuff.
And I know we've taken some preliminary steps at figuring out what we need to do as far as applying for that grant. I saw some of the emails today, so we'll continue working on that as well. Hopefully, we can get the grant and figure out how to proceed. So we're still trying to get our feet under us on that, that whole process as well, so. Thank you to the Sherlines for their patience. They've been great. You know, sometimes we get a resident complain, and what it really is, is us getting yelled at, right? You folks have been wonderful, very cooperative, very patient. Unfortunately, it's gonna take a little bit longer and a little bit more patience, but I assure you that, chief, myself, we're gonna be, I think we've already reached out to our city attorney about how to move forward with the whole process, okay? So thanks again. We appreciate it. Councilman Ryan?
I just wanted to try to piggyback a little bit off of it. My kids also go to Flickinger, and just so council is aware of that particular entrance off of Venker compared to the click, the Klingcammer side. Klingcammer side tends to be a lot of your older ages, where a lot of the parents will come in through that direction. Where on the Venker, it's a lot of your really young kids. It's your kindergartners, your first graders, the second graders, my, my kids' ages. And they're, honestly, it's, since my kids have been going to Flickinger, I think it's a miracle that we haven't had anyone get hit yet, because of how much there is no walking space. And I really do appreciate you guys bringing this to council.
Thanks again. Any other comments from the public? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Deanne. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.